It's 6:30 PM. My name is Ann Gobin. I'm the Chair of the Commission. We are calling the meeting to order and we are going to formally, can somebody make a motion to move the meeting across the street to Broadbrook School?
I'll make a motion that we reconvene our meeting across the street at the Broadbrook School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Need a motion is made and seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. We will be moving the grounds of the street to Broadbrook School Cafeteria. And Ken will be the sign on the door.
So, so, Ann, Ann, Ann. Ann. Ann.
Underneath your computer.
Ann. Ann. Ann.
Thank you.
Ann. Ann.
Well, they convened the meeting and said we're moving to Broadbrook. School. So now everybody's leaving to go to the school. We gotta wait 20 minutes. And someone is trying to get.
Ann. Ann. Ann.
Hello.
Ann, this is Peg. Ann.
Billy, we're on you.
Ann. Ann.
No, you're not.
Ann.
Huh? It's not showing you.
According to Ripan, and we have an IT person.
No.
Let's hope. We do. And I'll be coming with the laptop.
Ann.
That's fine.
Ann. Ann.
Reverse.
Ann.
Go on your channel.
Ruth.
Are we set up for this one?
Joe, someone. Joe, Joe, Joe. Joe. Ruth.
I tried to call. IT person waiting for us.
Ruth. Ruth. Rose. Ruth. Ruth.
Is this a meeting for the planning and zoning?
We're going across the street to elementary school because we ran out of space.
Gotcha.
And you can bring the bomb and be ready to get all three doors. Whoever you know.
All three? No, I split them to you.
Joe.
From Ben Joseph.
Joseph.
Did you get the white bike last weekend still?
The IT person's there. I need to lock that up.
Hey Peg, it's Mike. Can you hear me?
I can. What are I able to send to this to you over there or no?
So I think they their speaker is not on, but they're, I think, gonna pick the meeting up on that from that room. She's gonna have the laptop there, but she can't. She don't want to end this meeting because there's people that are here. So I think if we give them time to walk over there, she will probably boot up the same Zoom link and pick it up from the laptop over there. Because if we shut if we shut the link down and someone tries to join, then it'll be like the meeting was canceled. So they've got to leave it running.
Okay.
That's my assumption.
Yes. Um, you know, we gotta. Gotta. Figure.
The, um, because the recording is still running.
I know.
Yeah, I see there's some folks in the chat and other things. Yeah, I would, if you're here virtually for that meeting, I would just wait. And then when they get the virtual meeting booted up over there, it should should sync right up and you should be good to go.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
That's my guess.
Good to know what's going on.
I knew that that we had talked about having alternate locations that supported the technology, but never know how many people will will show. So I think I would just hold tight.
Yeah. Okay. And if not, the tape will be available tomorrow, right?
Yeah, yeah, because the recording's still running, so you should be good.
Okay.
And I'm going to jump off and come back on, so.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for helping. Thank you for.
Of course.
Commenting.
Across street.
How have these bad work? Yeah, so we can we can each grab an end of that and. Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Hold on, you want to handle that?
No, I got it.
All right. Okay.
Oh, they got the phone. That will help. I gotta get the other. I'm gonna stay here. But I think I need to. There's no else for that screen. No, your mouse is. So it's just hoping I do this.
That's serene.
Yeah. Something perfect.
Which is for speak.
This is for attendance. I will invite people to speak as we go through. Yeah. Are we set up to go? Yeah. Should be good.
For ten. It's not. Not sure I can hold them.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. It is now 6:43 PM. And I'm recalling the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. We have four regular members and our alternate Frank Cowdy will sit until our fifth regular member joins us. He'll be joining us by Zoom at about seven o'clock. So Frank, could you please sit? The meeting was scheduled and note for town hall. We've moved it physically to Broadbrook School also on Zoom. So we have a quorum. Added agenda items. Do we have anything? No added agenda items. So under legal notices, we have a legal notice for application PZ 2022-2014 North Road. It's a special use permit for site plan modification. The applicant is Don. And let's see if I have a copy. Yes, I will read the legal notice into the record formally. The East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold the following public hearing on Tuesday, October 11, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Details regarding how to it will be published on the commission's agenda and will be made available on the town's website. The application is PZ 2022-20. The applicant is Don's Auto Care Unwalker 14 North Road requesting a special use for commercial construction of a port canopy with solar panels. It's map 112 block 17 lot 2A. It's zoned M1. A full copy of the application is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage of the town website. All interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comments regarding this application. The legal notice ran in the Journal Inquirer on September 22nd and September 26th, 2022. Um, the next order of business is public participation. And again, that's for things that are not on tonight's agenda. We will take comment or things people want to say in the room. Again, not things on the agenda, but something else. We don't necessarily answer the questions that you may raise, but we will take up the issue with town staff as appropriate. So is there anybody in the room who would like to say something on public participation? So please raise your hand to be identified. I see no hands. Is there anybody joining us by Zoom who would like to raise something under public participation that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none. We will move to approval of minutes from our last meeting, which was September 27. Was everybody on the commission okay with the minutes as presented? Okay, if everybody is okay and there's no need for edits, a motion to approve the minutes would be in order.
I'll make a motion. We approve regular meeting minutes of meeting 1835 on September 27, 2022, as presented.
Is there a second to that motion? Was made by Mike, seconded by Jim. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Peg, let the record show that the four regular members who are present at the time all voted in favor.
Frank abstained.
Frank abstained.
Okay.
Okay, receipt of applications. Ruth Ann, did we receive any applications? No new applications. Anything under performance funds, actions, permit extensions, and road acceptance?
No.
Nothing. So now we are going to move to the public hearing portion of our agenda. The way the public hearing works is people will be invited to speak. Only the commission votes. So and we have a continued public hearing on PZ 2022-19, which is 297 North Road. It's a special use permit renewal for soil soil management facility. The applicant is North Road Materials LLC. So that all of you in the room know where we've been on this to date, in case you're here to speak on it. We opened the hearing. It's been continued a number of times. The public hearing at the last meeting was continued until October 25. The site in question includes what is a closed landfill. The applicant is seeking to apply clean fill on portions of the site. They also have presented they have a grandfathered construction yard on the site. But town staff needs to review form materials from the applicant because we have to make a compliance determination by the town staff prior to the next meeting, so we can consider the application and close the hearing on October 25. The history of the site of what we've learned so far in the hearing is the amount there was fill material placed outside the approved filling area. There are compliance issues that need to be resolved. And the commission will only grant the permit when it's satisfied that the standards of section 814 have been complied with regarding excavation and fill on the site. So I'm going to let the applicant present and that the commission will ask questions and then we will open it to the public. Please identify yourself for the record, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm starting to have my back to 110 people by my. I'm glad you all came here to support our application. Thank you. My name's Dwight Marion. I'm a landowner's planner and lawyer. My office is at 80 Adamer Lane in Simsbury, Connecticut. And I was retained at the beginning of the weekend. I have spent my weekend, a glorious weekend, trying to get up to speed as quickly as I can. A lot of moving. Great. A lot going on. And it's complicated. And there are things that weren't done right, and there were things that weren't done, and there are things that need to be corrected. And there are things that we need to do collectively and cooperatively to meet the needs of the residents of this town and this property owners. The planning director's concerns and the zoning enforcement officer's concerns and your responsibilities as a commissioner. Initially, this application sought a five-year extension. The last extension that you gave was three-year. After consultation with my clients, the owners of the property and the operator of the property, we think that five years is not going to be appropriate for what we need to do with you, neither is three years, but propose two years. Two years here for this reason. This permit expired on August 14th at the end of the three-year extension. No one wants to contract with them because they don't see that they're going to be able to operate. Without those contracts, there's no cash flow. Without that cash flow, we can't do some of the things that we need to do in the public's interest. And the larger, better, more lucrative contracts span more than a year. So a year is is not good. Two years will do it in terms of being able to continue to operate. But if you deny this application or even if you deny it without prejudice, inviting the applicant to come back, you're out of business. They can't take loads. They can't contract. They can't do anything. And without that cash flow, there's not a whole lot we can do going forward. So I'm going to ask you tonight, I thought initially, and I had a long and useful conversation with the planning director and the zoning enforcement officer this morning, who has been very helpful in trying to bring me up to speed. I thought initially, maybe we could continue this to October 25. And even as late as November 8th and still stay within the statutory requirements regarding the extensions. But I can't get done what needs to be done by October 25th or November 8th. And it would be futile to continue it. What we really need is a short-term extension and an understanding and an understanding and an agreement of how we're going to address the issues that are before you. There are four points made in the staff memo today regarding this application and this extension. And again, without the extension, not only do we not have cash flow, but more importantly, we can't do what probably should have been done earlier. The bins should have been constructed. They were not. The detention and retention facility and the associated stormwater management system was not constructed, which it should have been previously in order to handle those stormwater flows. I was very pleased to learn that the user is involved. He and I have worked together extensively. We know how to fix problems. We're committed to fixing these problems. We're committed to making this site operate exactly as you want it to operate, but we can't do it without an approval of an extension. And so we want to be able to put the bins in immediately. We want to be able to begin immediately to construct a detention retention facility and stormwater management system associated with that. And we want to work collectively with your staff and with your engineering department and others to solve the principal problems. And one of those problems is, and I asked Jay and Brona to request a map or plant showing showing the the area that was graded beyond the limits of your approval. I think there's probably no question in my mind that the grading in that area of the site exceeded your approval. Not by much, but it exceeded your approval. And we need to go back and one of the concerns of the planning director is what's the material that's in there? We've got a pretty good idea what it is, but we need to do some sampling. We're hiring a licensed environmental protection, LEP, that's certified by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to oversee what we're doing and to report to you. Let me comment now on those four comments, and I know you're want to move this agenda along, given the the public's interest in this other matter. So let me be brief rather than long. Kind of unusual for a lawyer, but I'll try it. Number one, her point here is that a significant amount of bill material was placed beyond the approved filling area. That was grading. And that's probably that's probably correct. It will show you that plan. And the long term, what I've found, and a good part of my practice has been in in resolving illegal activities for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and for inland wetlands agencies and so forth, is that we may be able to demonstrate that the material is better off being left there with a revision to the site plan because there is no adverse environmental impact and the material is good, clean, conforming material. We don't know the answer to that yet. We can't do it by October 25th. We can't do it by November 8th. It's going to take us several weeks to do that with an LEP, some sampling, some further investigations. I was all over the site Friday. Went through all the records that I could find on Friday, and there are still some gaps in that material, but we're committed to doing that. We're going to find out exactly what was put in that grade area, and we're going to tell you and tell the staff exactly what's there. We're going to make a proposal either to retain it in place with a revision coming back to you for site plan revision or remove it in whole or apart. Not not a not a good result for the property owner. I don't think it'll be necessary, but we're committed to resolving that. Second point, no protocol in place to ensure that only clean fill is defined with regulations and so forth. She's right. I I saw a stack of of bills of lading compiled by Fasen O'Neil. It's over a foot high just for the last year and a half. So we've got lots of bills of lading. But every load that comes in there must have a bill of lading. The load must be rejected if the bill of lading doesn't certify that it's compliant. And starting today, that's exactly the way it's going to be. I'm telling you that. And every day we'll post those bills of lading on our website for access by the staff and by the rest of the town's personnel. Every day. They'll see every bill of lading for every load that comes in, and no load's going to come in that's not compliant. We're committed to that. That's the way it should have been done. That's the way it's going to be done going forward. We do that with an LEP. We develop a conference comprehensive management plan. All we need right now is the right to continue an operation, so we can put the bins in, so we can put the detention retention base again. So we'll have cash flow to address these issues. Number three, the dredge material. Half hour ago, I was handed a report from the 10th, October 10th, that reanalyzed the suspect. The tenth, October tenth, that reanalyzed the suspect. Elements in part of that. No question about it. Dredge material from New Haven came up here. I know that site. I worked that site years ago. And it appeared to be compliant. It's on the site. I don't believe that any of it was used in that regraded area. It's concerned of the planning director, justifiable issues concerned. But it's there in a pile. I've looked at it. And it was sent back out for analysis of arsenic and another material, and it's been found to be compliant. I've got the test result right here in front of me. I've only got one copy. I can leave with my one copy. If you'll PDF it, send it back to me, but when I get home tonight, I'll PDF it to you so you have it. It's what I told you today. That I was told it was compliant. It is compliant. That's number three. Number four, no holding bins in place. We need the holding bins. We need an extension to build the holding fields. We can't do anything on the site. Without an extension. Those holding builds should be constructed. We'll continue our research and investigations as to the nature of the material on the site. That we cannot. Validate with bills of lading from previously. And we will pull any suspect material, put them in the bins. Analyze them and decide whether they could be remediated right there easily or have to be removed from the site. I can't do that by October twenty fifth. I can't do that by November eighth. It'll never get done. If an extension of some length is not granted because. We can't do the work on the site without a permit, and we don't have a permit now because it's expired. And we won't have the contracts and the cash flow will be. That's the situation that I tell you. That this. Team of Jay Ucer and me and the LEP that we're going to bring on board, and we'll probably have to bring an environmental consultant in here shortly. To take a look at the environmental impacts of the grading that went beyond the limits of the site plan and will report back to you. Every bill of lading will be on there every day. And once a month, I will send a report of our progress to you so that you know as a commission exactly what we're doing. And I look forward to working with your staff on resolving this problem, keeping this longstanding operator in business. There's a service that's provided here that no one else does. They took a lot of the storm damage in the October storm in twenty ten that no one else could take. They are part of our efforts for a sustainable environment because what they do on this site, very few people do. And that is they will take excess material that would otherwise just be wasted, capping a landfill somewhere. And. Combine it with other materials and where necessary, like the compost that they have from the October storm. High storm waste and be able to sell that back out to people who may construct the use of it. It's an adaptive reuse of material. It's very important. There's very few sites that do this. And if you don't have the site. People doing development on this area are going to have to go elsewhere. The cost is greater. The cost will be greater on the consumers in the end. And they won't be able to buy materials here because there won't be materials available to them. So for all those reasons, and it's a public service, it's important to keep operating. And we have an operator who is committed to resolving these issues with the town. We have people that are pledging to you that the job will get done. And the absolute need to have it approved. I strongly urge you to approve an extension of two years. Allow us to continue to report to you on a regular basis. That's what we're going to do. With that, Jay, maybe you can explain what you found and will be done.
Could I ask you to be brief because we have a lot of people who would like to speak and we ended. According to our bylaws.
That was as brief as a lawyer could be. Sorry.
Can I let the record show that Dave Leeson has joined us? So he is now sitting as the fifth full member. On the commission.
The record, J R Russo and Associates, and I will be. This is essentially a copy of the as-built plan that you saw probably a month or so ago.
You want to turn that one for the public to see? Since we have it up here.
So as I said, this is a copy of the as-built that that you had probably a month ago that. That planning staff had recommended that we provide to you. And I've added to that what were the original phase lines and what were called section lines on the engineer engineering plans that would be. Approval. For this particular application. So you'll know down there that there's. Section one, section two, section three, and then to section four. Section one is the area that I modified. And basically what I did is I. Extended it out to the east, if you will, or north east to include the slope or the fill area that. Attorney Marion had been talking about, and I think that you had discussed with staff at probably one of the earlier meetings. So. Originally, that section line or phase line followed right behind the drainage basin that's there. I've extended that down the slope to include the area where that other material is replaced. So it's a slight modification in the size of that section one or phase one. To include that fill area that was there and is is now acid fill placed in some wood chips in terms of erosion controls and so forth that are there. As Attorney Marion had pointed out, we plan on testing that material. Hopefully it comes back clean. They seem to think it will. They seem to know what it is. We would like to keep it there. Probably would do more damage if we tried to remove it as as the attorney has said. So. That's the change that you see in that particular plan versus the one that you saw. Other than that, everything here is the same. There's been nothing else added, just a modification of the section one basin that's to include that slope on the north side of the of the site.
Right. For the commission. We continued this until October twenty fifth. So if there's no pressing. Questions. I would propose we go to the public. Does anyone have anything they need to ask tonight? No. Dave, do you need to ask anything tonight?
No, I do not.
Okay, this is a public hearing. So is there anybody from the public who wants to speak to this application? Yes, Murray.
Yes, Murray, I'm from Rice Road driver. At the last public hearing, I had asked a question in regards to the. Seven or eight truckloads of dirt that were going down Rice Road on Saturday morning. I was told I. Merrick that he would get back to me. Has it, but I've done my own homework on that. And those truckloads, I believe, went to a. House. That's off a stulton road that's building on across from, you know. A garage. I think I have my answer on that. But I have a concern because also at one of the meetings when. Bins came up. In the conversation, Merrick also stated that that application was never followed through on. So it wasn't required. And now the attorney tonight is saying the bin should have been put in place. I personally could care less. What I'd be concerned is the stuff coming in when we gave orders. If that is going to contaminate Scannick River, I have a major reason with that, especially with all the efforts that the town has put into. The Scannick River, especially the American heritage river people. And I think that's unfair to them. And knowingly and intentionally. Going over and above what they've been approved, and now they're asking us to give them mercy. I'm not looking to put them out of business, but if we're going to give them the mercy that I believe they deserve. Then we need to stay on top of it to make sure that it doesn't continue because far too many establishments in this town are not following the rules and regulations. But if I. Have something in my yard that's not supposed to be there, rest assured, somebody's going to call. And it's not tip for tat. My concern is for public safety. And right now, that Scannick River has me concerned. My own health has had me concerned over the last few years. And it's not their fault. But I wanted in the hospital after that one pile caught on fire. And it was covered over several years ago. And never got reported past the fire marshal that was in place at the time. My health is deteriorated, and I want to make sure that nobody else's health is deteriorating. I can't prove it came from that fire. But I was fine until that fire, and then the next day I was deadly ill. And it's continued on. So. I just want to make sure it doesn't happen to anybody else in town, and I want to make sure that if we give them the mercy that attorney is asking for, that they follow the rules and regulations like everybody else in town expected to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this?
I'm a three-point Rice Street. Just curious, like, are you still working through the corrective order? It seems like a lot of the stuff that the attorney talked about, the stuff that would have to be addressed in the corrective order and not through any new permit process, right?
There are two, I'll say, separate things, the enforcement action and the pending application. So they're both. On the table. Anybody else who wants to comment on this particular application? Anybody online who wants to comment on this application? Okay. If we are. Done commenting. We have continued this until our October twenty fifth meeting. And we will consider it again. And take more input after the materials the attorney has promised to the town staff are delivered. Hopefully that's enough before the meeting that there can be a review and issues can be worked out. So with that. We'll have a motion to continue this to October twenty fifth.
I'll make a motion. We. Continue application P Z twenty two twenty two dash nineteen for special use permanent renewal for soil management facility. Located at two ninety seven North Road with M and M Limited Partnership. Until our next meeting of October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two.
Okay, we are now going to take. Oh, I'm sorry, we have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Okay, that's unanimous. We are now going to move on to. Yeah, application before us. Concerning. One fifteen Scannick Road, its application P Z twenty two dash twenty. Two. For all of you that came, good evening and welcome to the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, my name is Ann Gobin, and I'm the chairperson. I'd like to explain the format so you understand what's going on here. The meeting is being held both here in person and on Zoom. A number of documents have already been placed on the record. The first being a legal notice that was previously read into the record and was published in the Journal Inquirer on September second and eighth, twenty twenty two. The application number P Z twenty twenty two dash twenty two requesting a special use permit. For event hosting under section three oh five point seven B five of the East Windsor zoning regulations. The applicant is the East Windsor Historical Society, Inc. At one fifteen Scannick Road and Cemetery Road. There is a twelve-page set of plans prepared by J R Russo and Associates. Received in the East Windsor Planning Department on August twenty second, twenty twenty two. There's a drainage report. Dated August tenth, prepared by J R Russo. There's an affidavit regarding posting of the public hearing sign. There's a memo to the town planner from Art. Endur L. The third dated August twenty third, twenty twenty two. Indicating the W P C A has approved connection of the sewer for the Blue Barn at their April twenty seventh meeting. There's an email dated September first from Jay Ursery to the town planner. That requested the public hearing be continued until today, October eleventh. There's certification of mailing receipts from J R Russo dated September first. There's a memo to the commission dated September first from Michael Damato, consulting planner. With staff comments and noting our deadline for decision is sixty-five days from the close of the public hearing. And I would like to put on the record because I received them during the comment period, two postcards. So that's for the record. The way we'll handle this is how we handle all our applications. We'll begin the hearing with the applicant presenting the application in detail so the commission and the public can understand what is proposed. The commission. May ask questions during the presentation. We will then allow the attorney representing the neighbors to present his concerns. According to our bylaws, the meeting shall run no later than ten thirty P M. Tonight. So that everyone in the public. Has an opportunity to speak on the application. I'm going to ask that you limit your time to three minutes when you come forward. I'm going to ask that you be brief, to the point, and avoid undue reputation repetition of previously stated concerns. It's fine to say I agree with whomever or what was said. You don't have to go through the whole. Spiel again. When. We start the public comment. I will ask people to raise their hands and wait to be recognized. Please, when you're asked, when you come forward to speak, make sure you tell us your name and address before speaking. And be clear if you support, oppose, or don't want to be classified in either of those categories. It's your opportunity to ask questions and make comments. There won't be back and forth during public participation. It's. We'll be listening. And the commission will make every attempt to follow up at the next meeting on things that are left open. After everyone has had an opportunity to speak. The commission will decide whether it's appropriate to close the public hearing or continue it. But once the hearing is closed, no additional testimony from the applicant or the public is permitted. We will not be voting on the application tonight. We go through the hearing process, close the hearing. Then the vote occurs after we've had technical input from the staff. The commission has the option to approve the application as submitted. Approve it with stipulations, conditions, or modifications. Table the action to a future meeting. Or in rare cases, we do deny applications. It takes three votes in favor to approve. After this meeting, if you have questions. You are welcome to contact the planning office. At eight six oh six two three six zero three oh. There should be no off-the-record conversations. With any of the commission members, we get all of our input through this process and through documents put on the record. So that's how this is going to work. And with that. I will invite the applicant to come forward and present the application.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Attorney Carl Landolina. Partner in the law firm of Fagan and Landolina at forty seven Spring Street in Windsor Locks. I'm joined tonight by someone well-known to you. Jay Osery from there, Russo and Associates. His firm is the project engineers presenting the site plan for your review this evening. I know that there are other members tonight of the East Windsor Historic Society, Inc. Independents, maybe scattered throughout the room. I think some of their officers are here as well. So. Obviously, there are a lot of people here tonight. I think most of them are are here for the purposes of participating. So obviously, there are a lot of people here tonight. I think most of them are here for the purposes of participating in this particular public hearing. So I'm going to keep my comments extremely brief and let Jay do most of the talking tonight to talk about the specifics of the site plan. This is an application brought to you under section 305 of your zoning regulations. The, we are entitled farm regulations. Looks like they were adopted in 2011. And under specifically section 305.7b5 on your regulations, you are allowed to permit by special permit as an accessory used to farming event hosting, and the actual language is event hosting such as banquet and rental facilities. There is no special language in section 305, no special criteria that applies to any of these uses. So the criteria that will apply are set forth in section 701, which is your general criteria for all special permits. I, I believe we meet all the criteria set out in section 701. Now I'll go into detail more than probably at the next meeting. One of the items that you have a right to ask for, I'm told, I just got involved in this probably same time Dwight Marion got involved, the visual project on North Street, or North Road. But I know that the applicant has engaged the services of FA, FA Heskis and Associates, which is an engineering, engineering firm, and he's, he's branding. And Scott Heskis, who you probably have seen here before, is a traffic engineer. And he is in the process of preparing the traffic impact study for your review. And certainly, I don't believe this will be closing tonight, so he will present his findings at your next meeting. And at that point, I will take you through the special requirements under section 701 and tell you how we think we comply and therefore are entitled to a special permit subject to whatever conditions you feel are appropriate to protect the general requirements under the statutes and under your regulations for public health, safety, welfare, and property. So with that, I will turn it over to Jay, and he can walk you through the, the site plan. Thank you.
Good evening. Here is J.R. Russo and Associates here representing the applicant, the East Windsor Historical Society, Inc. I guess the first question is, I'm not sure where to put this plan where everybody can see it. I don't know that there's a good spot. Not here. You commissioned members of plans. I know you looked at them and confused them. And I probably can kind of walk you through it without pointing at it specifically, I guess, other than just a quick introduction over here, as the commission members can look over to their left. And let me just give you a brief kind of look here so we know about what we're talking about, what we're looking at on the, on the plan itself. And I apologize, sir, I know we can't speak. It's tough in the mood of this meeting. So if we look at this plan down at the bottom of the page, the Scantic Road, we look to the right, we come to the intersection or the triangle with Phelps Road, Scantic Cemetery Road, the congregational church right on the opposite corner located over here. And when we head in the eastward direction down Cemetery Road, that takes us in this direction. The building that's the subject of the application is this building right here in the middle, which is pretty much the largest building on the site overall. I don't know, maybe it's part of the, I'm not sure. But it's what they call a blue barn, it's located right here. The entrance and exit to the site is off a cemetery. Majority of the park is located right here around the Southern Farm. So with all that said, why don't I just walk over to the podium and we'll kind of talk about the site a little bit, maybe a little bit about some of the possible uses which are on your application. And talk a little bit about the requirements for a site plan and this type of a, a use. So again, looking at the building we're talking about, obviously, we're, we're creating some additional impervious coverage with driveways, parking areas, and it also shows up in the photograph there that you see to the left of that picture. So it requires a storm drainage system similar to many of the others that you've seen before you before. We're adding some catch basins. And we're providing a basin for treatment and attenuation for peak flows during given storm events. And it discharges into a, an existing drainage area that was previously constructed on the Tyler Farm prior to the property being divided up. There is an extensive drainage report that was part of the application that was submitted. It was renewed by Len Norton, your town engineer. And there were, I think, more minor comments in Len's memo that you have in your packets. We have no issues with any of those comments and we can address all of those. And get Len a revised set when the findings is right for that. So the drainage system, again, no deep increase during any of the storms events provides freedom and attenuate the quality of the sewage. As read in your, into the record, I think the chair read, did you have a memo from the WPCA who's going to be bringing sanitary sewer to this site to save this, this building, as well as the ability to serve the other buildings on the site? Those plans have been completed, submitted to the WPCA and have been approved by WPCA. I believe it was last spring or early summer, so that has been stated. There are also, obviously, some parking requirements that's in your regulations for different uses. In this particular case, the event use or assembly use requires one space for three seats. Our architect has told us that we can put a maximum of 250 people into this building for certain events. If we do the math, we're required to have, I don't know, 82 or 83 spaces. We're providing, I believe it's 88 spaces, which are required, a couple of handicap spaces. I'm going to walk back over to the planning room just for a minute. The majority of all of the parking spaces are located over here on the far east side, on the northern side of this barn. Handicap spaces are located over here directly within the building. And then there's a few more spaces here in this area, which is basically the service area of the building. And other entryways, a few spaces located over there. We show a driveway continually going through the entire site. And this basically is for emergency vehicles or emergency purposes, so they have full access to the site. It will be gated, will not be used by any of the individuals in the facility. There will be a gate located here, another gate located here. And with box boxes and keys for fire departments, police department, and certain members of the historical society. So it's not a driveway that will be used on a regular basis, only during an emergency need. There is also a full lighting plan included into our packets, the plan set. There is lighting that'll take care of lighting on the parking areas, driveways, parking lots, apps on the building that meets the requirements of your regulations. The minimum lighting, the lighting obviously only used if there was an event in the evening or during the dark. The lights are not going to be on every day, they're not going to be on every night, only during an event that might take place later in the evening where it's going to get dark and the lights are required for safety of people walking back and forth to their cars and leaving the site. There's also a landscaping plan in your plan set, as is required. There's landscaping even in parking areas, there's trees, street trees. I think we've got red maples. There's shrubbery around the building and around the patio areas of the east side of the building. They're shown along the paved areas where the papers are. And there's a berm, a landscape berm. I'll walk back to the plan here and then for a second. And talk a little bit about that. This area here, we'll back up, the residential homes is one, two, three residences that are located here. The dividing berm is 155 and 165. It's a total of 15 feet in width. And we've planted our other bays on top that are 4 and 5 feet tall at the beginning. So eventually, they'll get up probably to 15 or 20 feet screening initially, probably 10 to 12 feet in terms of the stall height and screening of the 2010. Now, this is a berm that typically you would see when we're ordering residential and sold properties. I think maybe the last one you saw might have been a model given that we did on Route 5, the local gas station, I think that North Road. We had something similar where we ordered the residential to the west, where the buffers are required. We have residential consols against. In this particular case, based on the way the regulation is, it actually isn't required as all of these properties, the buses here, these residential occupied properties are not sole residential, but also business, they're main one, sole properties, as is the front of the historical society property, as well as the neighbor's property. And if we go back and look, people would say, well, why is it sole business? Well, this is the village of Scantic. If you look at the East Windsor zoning map, if you look at Scantic, look at Windsorville, and I think obviously Broadville, and maybe Melrose, although I'm positive it's all Melrose. These were all the old villages in East Windsor. And there was some business uses. And there was business zones. And these are still sole businesses. My understanding is that one of these sites here was the work and play daycare, which eventually left there. We located that to Phelps Road, and they built a new facility. Where's the play daycare? It was originally located right there. There's this house in the business zone. It was there, I guess, a couple of years. So these are all sole business. If you look strictly at the regulation, there's no buffer requirement. But because it's a residential use, we provide the buffer, we provide the berm, and we provide the screen. And that is located here along all these sides, adjacent to these locks. In terms of uses, you know, if you read the application, it talks a little bit about some positive uses. The society has had meetings with their members and they've talked about a number of uses. The application talks about a farmer's market, weddings, shower, forage, FFA, rotary, lion's blood, blood drive, youth sports, indoor sports, art show, B market, those types of things. So and I think, you know, at the end of the day, this application is probably going to come down, you know, to you, the commission. The neighborhood who's obviously here, and we're happy to hear it, because we want to hear what they have to say. And that's part of this whole process, so that we can hopefully come to a conclusion and give you, the commission, the comfort level that you need to hopefully improve something. And we don't know what it's going to be at the end of the day. You know, maybe we can't do this, maybe we can't do that, maybe we can do this, maybe we could do that, maybe you could do that if you had this. We don't know. And, and it's, it's going to be a process. And we understand that. We understand that it's going to take a number of meetings, hopefully to come to some common ground here where, where we can all look at it and say, we've done our job. You know, the system works, the public came, they had input, we had input, you consider it all. And we're hoping that we can come to some kind of conclusion where the society will be able to do something with this facility that they now own to hopefully generate some income. So move down the road to be able to keep the facility open, because obviously it's an expensive ordeal. They're a nonprofit. They don't have the ability to really make a whole lot of money. And this will help them in the future to be able to raise the capital that they need to keep this, this thing operating on a, on a regular basis. So that's a basic overview of the application. And I'm not going to go into it in a lot more detail, because there's a whole ton of people here who I don't want to speak. But, but I did want to say one thing. I was leaving my house tonight. My wife said to me, what time are you going to be home? And I said, I have no idea, but I think it's going to be late. And she said, well, I was in East Windsor the other day, and I saw those signs. Is that what you're going, I said, yep, that's it. She goes, would you want that in our backyard? And I thought about it. And I thought about it all the way over here, as I was driving over. And I thought about it some more and I said, yeah, I think I could, but it would depend on what is this going to be? So I think there is a comment here. I mean, you know, would I want something going on there every day? I don't think so. But maybe a certain number of events over a year's time, certain types of events. And I'm thinking, yeah, I think I would say we don't need that. That would be, but no, not every day. And there's certain things that I probably wouldn't want. I'm saying more because John Burden's probably back there cringing right now telling you, shut up, shut up. So I won't say anymore. And let's let the public speak.
I would like to add that yeah, the comments are when somebody's called to speak, if we need to maintain an orderly hearing. It was just raised that there was a memo from Len Norton, our town engineer, that town staff had, and it was not in my packet, but it is on the record. It's dated 8/30/22. And it has four comments, and those four comments are on the record also. Can I just add that we got an email from the health department? Okay, and there's an email from Westford Lyra to Ruth Ann Calabrese concerning this application. And it has one, two, three comments. So that's on the record too. And I will let the attorney for the neighbors speak.
Actually, I'm representing the applicant.
Oh.
Mr. Needleman, if there's someone to
Okay, could you identify yourself for the record?
Yeah, Carl Landolina, I represent that. So as I said to you previously in my opening remarks, the standards and criteria that you need to consider are found in section 701. And again, I'm going to reserve comments on most of them, but the one I wanted you to start thinking about immediately was 701.1, which is the first special current finding required to make. And the language said that the proposed uses in general accordance with the relevant provisions in the plan of conservation and development. Which as you know, if you're sort of guiding the pool, your last plan of conservation and development, as I understand it, was adopted in 2016. So you're about halfway through the 10-year period, you'll be adopting a new plan at some point in the next five or six years. So I've handed out to you what I believe are the relevant provisions in the plan of conservation and development. And this is basically pages 20 to 25. And this is one of the primary strategies of the plan of conservation and development is articulated by this commission is to preserve community assets, cultural, historical, and agricultural. So I'll leave that to your review. I think there's certainly language in this that would support. And as you know, the purpose of the plan of conservation is a planning tool. And after you enact a plan of conservation and develop, the next thing we'll be able to look at regulations. We say, we set out some general goals in our plan of conservation and development through our regulations to support those, those goals. So you can look at this section that I've given you and look at the regulation. And I think that this particular regulation, which allows these sort of accessory uses at the farming activities, is a way that many communities, I represent a number of them in this area, Summers, for example, which is a community much like yours in some respects. Uh, in this area, Summers, for example, which is a community much like yours in some respects. With deep agricultural roots and um, you know. There aren't many people who make a living by just farming crops and raising livestock anymore. It's a difficult enterprise. And in this uh day and age, diversity of uses. On farms is critical to survival of the fox. And we all know what happens when farms uh no longer are able to farm or re-farm. Uh, they turn into subdivisions. Um, and I'm assuming if we were planning a subdivision on this property. There're probably twice as many people here, I don't know. But um, but in any event, I'll leave that to your review. The other threshold issue, and I I know Mr. Needleman very well, he's a friend and a colleague. And I thought to myself, well, what would I say if I was Mark? And the first thing I would say is this is not a farm. So I would submit to you, it is a farm. And if you let your debt, looking at the definition of farm on page eight. And you're going to get do that on your own. Uh, a farm is attractive land used primarily for agriculture. Now, there is agricultural activities going on on the property that's outside the B ones. It's mostly uh to the rear of the blue barn and um. I guess to the north, to the north, it was uh this property is a horse farm. And I believe that gentleman leases this property and 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 parks hay off of it. Um, assumed for his use, but maybe sold uh in in the market. In any event, so the question is always a difficult one. What is primarily? Does that mean how much land is dedicated to one use versus another? How much income is is produced from one use or another? But I would submit to you that uh this primarily is a farm because most of the land is dedicated. Towards um to farm uses. And we've got agricultural buildings that are going to remain. We're going to take one of those because there's more and hopefully with your approval, turn that into. An event center sometime. And then, of course, we've got the uh the other buildings, which some of them have been on the property for for a long time. And some of which were removed there as part of the uh historical uh nature of the property as well. So um with that. Um, I will let uh Mr. Needleman uh make his comments and then turn it over to the public and um.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. It's been a while since I sat at tables this slow, so it just took me an extra second or two to get up. Please let me introduce myself. I'm Mark Needleman. I'm a attorney with an office in Bloomfield. I've practiced in Bloomfield since the early nineties. I uh. Practice in the areas of municipal and zoning law and have done so for about thirty two years. I've represented a number of parties here in town, the broader fire department. In its recent joint venture with the town and coming together and finding a solution that. That works for the fire department and the town. And represented the East Windsor Housing Authority. And I've represented several of East Windsor residents. I am now formerly representing Boavers. They're right here in the front row. They are one of the three neighbors. Uh, you were told about the property. I I'm also speaking on behalf of several of their neighbors, meaning the other residential properties uh abutting. The subject property. Ladies and gentlemen, please understand, and I say this, and I I hope people concur that. We aren't here looking to hang the historical society. Don't have an issue with the historical society. They're a great group, they've done good things in town, and there's no doubt that they'll do other good things in town. Having said that, however. That doesn't mean that we can't honestly and fairly address. The plan that they're presenting. And the place where they're presenting it. And share with you why we don't feel it is proper for this community. Again, in doing so, it is not our intention to tarnish any member of the society or the society itself. First, I need to raise what I'll call a jurisdictional issue. It is my opinion that the commission lacks the legal authority to hear the application tonight. I say that because I look at your section nine hundred point two. It says each application for a special permit shall. And the word shall is defined in your regulations as meaning mandatory and not discretionary. That definition is in section two oh one point one. So again, section nine hundred point two says it shall be accompanied by. A site plan application. Now. I was provided a month ago with a sheet of twelve pages. Which might appear to be a site plan application or the type of materials. That one might encounter in receiving and viewing a site plan application. But it is not, there are formalities for a site plan application. And there was no such document or supporting documents in the file, at least. Not when I came into the planner's office last Thursday and she was very gracious. In meeting with me and sharing contents and her thoughts, and I shared a few of mine. Uh, including the fact that I didn't see a. Traffic study, which is required by your regulations, and I can address those. There's another jurisdiction issue. It's connected general statute eight dash three C. And in parentheses, A, eight dash three C, parentheses. It states if an application for a special permit involves a regulated activities. And that refers to activity that falls under the jurisdiction of the inland wetlands commission. Then the applicant must, and again, shall and must are mandatory, not discretionary. Must submit an application to the inland wetlands agency. And here are the key words, on or prior to the date that the special permit application is filed. According to the planner, no such application had been filed at least as of Thursday. I'm not sure why not. I note on plans that the applicant has provided to you on at least one of those documents in the notes section. Uh, it indicates that a portion of the property uh has wetlands locate on it. Now, it's possible it may not be anywhere near where the work is being uh proposed. However, I did discuss with the town planner uh the activity that was being proposed. To create a retention detention basin, which then flows in. To another basin and then that flows into the Scantic River. And uh she indicated to me, yes, that would come within the purview of the commission. Because it's within the one hundred and fifty foot buffer zone. Which, when that happens, the commission reviews it. It may have a different scope of review than an activity within a designated wetlands. But clearly requires an application, a review and a report. In light of these two mandatory statutory provisions. I'm sorry, let me back up. In addition, the statute says. That the wetlands commission must support. I'm sorry, provide its report with its final decision to the commission. Prior to the commission making a decision on the zoning or special permit. So in theory. If the applicant had submitted a weapons application prior or on the same day as the special permit application. But hadn't reached the final decision and submitted its findings to you as of tonight, let's say, and you were proceeding. That would be okay. But because they never submitted. And can't at this point do so in a manner which complies with the statute. I respectfully suggest that the commission. Has no authority to proceed and and believe me, I don't, I don't say that with any joy. Um, a lot of time, a lot of effort. And money, um, and it's money from individuals. It's it's not some some source um within pockets perhaps. But if we don't go forward tonight, I and I fear we can't. Then we have to start the process over. The applicant has to start over and has to do it in accordance with the law. Staff needs to review it. Wetlands commission needs to report to you. And then in all event, can we move forward if the applicant chooses to do so? But it must follow the statutory provisions of a timely filing. And it must respect the fact that a final report must be delivered to you before your decision. And again, they can't not, they cannot now receive an application. Pass on it and forward their findings to you. The statute does not provide for that. So I I guess my question to you, the commission is, in light of this. How do you choose to proceed? And I know this is not something that you may have ever encountered before. And frankly, um, as I indicated, I've been doing it for a long time. Uh, representing a town for over thirty years and in zoning weapons boards. I've served and was the chairman on a weapons commission. Um, these are serious matters. The law takes them seriously and has very specific requirements. And the failure to comply with these requirements. Would make any permit granted, assuming one was. Uh, subject to an immediate appeal in the spirit of court and likely to find the decision. Commission made overturned. Now, again, that's my opinion, okay? I respect the fact that someone else would have a different opinion. Although I've read you the statutes and they seem awfully clear. And I don't speak for the town planner, and I sort of don't want to put her in an awkward position. But when I raised this issue last Thursday, um. I thought it it. Reverberated a bit, but again, I don't speak for the planner. So if the commission is going to move forward, notwithstanding the fact that I've raised this jurisdictional issue. Um, then I have a complete presentation to make. Um, and it will take a little while. Um, and I have materials that I would share with, but I I don't intend to do that unless. You are going to move forward and quite frankly, I I would also add that. When I came in to meet with the planner on Thursday, uh, we had a set of plans. Uh, that had been on file for some time. And uh, the very little I've seen tonight. Is significantly different, significantly different from what had been on file. And I don't believe in light of that, that either in your consulting planner. Um, or the town planner, or the town engineer, or the wetlands commission. Or the sewage body. Have had a reasonable and proper opportunity to review. Most current plans, I certainly haven't. And and my interest in that of my clients is is well known. So I I we feel a bit blindsided, that's not your fault. Right, maybe no one's, but we clearly were blindsided between Thursday and today. With the town hall being closed yesterday. Um, my representation of being very well known to the applicant and its consultant. Um, didn't hear from them, I think as a matter of courtesy, uh, that would have been a problem. So madam chair and and gentlemen, commission. Um, I'm going to initially defer to you as to whether uh you choose to proceed tonight or not. And and I will either continue with my presentation or not, depending on your decision.
My sense is this is a public hearing. This is um one comment. And we owe it to the rest of the people here to hear everybody else's comments. Do you confer?
What does that say?
Well, I can tell you that a wetlands application was filed with our office. A wetlands application was filed with our office this morning. Yes, and um I will tell you that our official wetlands map showed no activity within. The upland review area, no wetlands in that area. There's a small farm pond on the property next door, which Jay went in and delineated the hundred and fifty feet from that. Which does trigger the um detention basin being within that upland review. And so the the application was filed.
More than that, absolutely. Um, my take on it, for all your background is wood, it's always the wetlands goes first.
And so a decision can't be rendered until wetlands has rendered their decision. Now, what attorney Needleman pointed out is a. Aspect.
If I may, I do agree with the planner as I did say that you can't have a final decision to report. But unfortunately, the general statute, not even the regulations, but and then you'll say eight dash three C. A says it has to be submitted before or at the same time. I don't know what your official date of receipt is, but I know it wasn't today. And so uh, even if you were to defer a decision, that wouldn't cure. The jurisdictional defect that I raised. And again, I take no pleasure because if the applicant wants to, he can start again or he can start again. And we'll be back here. And I. A lot of people came tonight and and they're concerned and they care and they'd like to be heard. And frankly, I don't think I would mind hearing what they have to say, but that isn't the point. Uh, the point is, is their legal authority. For you to conduct a public hearing, which is part of the application process. The application requires a public hearing. But if the application itself is invalid, then the proceedings are. And I respectfully suggest that the only thing commission can do. Is to deny the application tonight. You can do it with or without prejudice, that's certainly up to you. And again, it's then up to the applicant whether it wants to comply with state statutes. Or not. Um, and if they choose to and want to go forward, they have that opportunity. I'm not, not trying to prevent them, but I am trying to make sure we all follow the law.
Nancy Heardon, this.
Yes.
He's raising a jurisdictional issue, which is an important one. Because it determines whether or not you can go forward. First of all, while attorney Needleman is correct about what the statute says. I I don't know if he's unaware of this case or is unfamiliar with it or was or or what have you. But there is a case from the Connecticut Supreme Court, I believe it's Carr versus. Playing a zoning commission, it's a two thousand and five case, I believe this is the case. Where Carr says that the players are filed, the wetlands application. Prior to the date of filing a zoning application does not, does not deprive this commission of jurisdiction to hear this application. It may be a basis upon which you may turn this down, but you still have jurisdiction. So I would advise my points that since it's our application, we don't think this is a jurisdictional issue. That since it's our application, we don't think this is a jurisdictional issue and we're willing to. Uh, go and allow these folks to speak and present our, the rest of our application as it is it, uh, in a normal course. But we don't think there's a jurisdictional issue here. There are other Supreme Court cases that say. Even though your application requirements are that you have a site plan and the word shall is. That you as a commission get to dictate what materials you need. To make a decision on this application. And after, I would assume from that language in those Supreme Court cases that part. Let's see presumed failure to actually file another piece of paper, which just. An application that has the same information, again, does not deprive this commission of jurisdiction. And we're willing to go forward on that basis as well. So with that, since it's our application, the folks are here. Uh, I suggest Mr. Attorney Needleman present his, his, uh, his comments and we go forward. And then, you know, obviously you want to get a town attorney opinion. That's, you know, if that's my understanding, I. Literally dated a case on this exact issue two years ago and that would be helpful.
Is it acceptable to the commission that we continue and let the hearing go forward? We weren't going to make a decision tonight anyway. Um, tonight is a night for all the public to share their comments. Is that acceptable to the commission?
What do you think, Brian? I agree with Brian. Unless our attorney, we had, we could ask a question, but it, it, it leads it up to. Failure. Where, how can we, I mean, I know we're not making the decision tonight, but. It, it's questionable. And then all the work we're gonna put into this. And then it could be a waste of time because we'll have to do it all over again.
I guess I heard both attorneys say they were amenable to letting people speak.
Well, is there, is there a back? I'm sure I, I didn't say that. I say, I, I regret the fact. That the jurisdictional issue could prevent that because. I think we all want to hear.
Yeah.
But I, I have to. Be steadfast in, in my opinion and position. That the commission is without authority now. Uh, my colleague, uh. Came on late, didn't get to play golf this weekend, so I, I sympathize with him, but um. I guess, uh, you know, you certainly do have the right to seek. Your own counsel, um, and, um. That's certainly an option for you. I'm not telling you what you should do or not. Um, but that, that's a third option.
Do you want your fans to try following the town returns?
Could we continue?
I don't think you give you an answer that quickly.
Then perhaps, uh, they can take this, or take the decision and say it's invalid.
Right.
And have to start all over.
The other pieces. And to make a record, if in the end it's either a withdrawn reply or a deny and reply, you have to create the record again.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Louder.
But.
Can't hear you.
Okay, everyone, um, what I said was. The pros and cons of hearing everyone tonight, if the applicant decides to withdraw and reapply. If he's denied and reapplied. Um, to come back, we'd have to create the whole record again. Is it the, the file would start all over again? Yeah, that, that's what I.
I think we all agree. We, we have to start at square one again if.
If that, if that happens. Yeah, yeah.
So I am extremely confident in my legal position, having tried cases on both these issues recently. Withoutwithstanding that, we don't want to waste anyone's time, so the applicant has advised me to draw the application. And we will be back in a later day.
But he said it was an other. Okay, could we have quiet so that the commission can deliver?
I'd like to make the motion that we accept the withdrawal again.
Okay, we have a motion on the table and a second.
And what is it?
We need a motion that we accept the withdrawal of the application.
Thank you.
That's not, this is a commission decision, not a public decision. Is there, Jim seconded it. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
They voted yes too, so. The application has been withdrawn and we've accepted the withdrawal. And it's unanimous.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we take a ten minute recess.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, we have a motion to take a ten minute recess and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're calling the meeting back to order. And the conversations not related to the commission, please go out in the hallway. Yeah, we want to give him his turn. No, it's a public hearing. Anyone's welcome to be here, but. Quiet, please.
Sorry.
Okay, we are resuming. We're resuming our meeting. We completed the.
Excuse me, in the back of the room?
Okay. The next public hearing is for application PZ twenty twenty-two dash twenty. Fourteen North Road. It's a special use permit for site plan modification. The applicant is Don Walker, Don's Auto Care Center. Who is presenting this. Application.
Name for the record, sir.
Thank you. Setting up so everybody can see.
Uh, for the record, JRS, J R Russo here representing Don's Auto.
If anybody needs to come up to see.
They, they mean this service manager. Jacob Alltrades, guy who actually runs the shop is also here. So this is an application that I think you're all pretty familiar with. We're kind enough to listen when we came and talk to you about a potential use here in terms of. Charging stations for electric vehicles, uh, canopy with some solar on it. And some vacuums to complement the car wash and the upgrades to his car wash that he wants to do. So. Based on your new regulation that was recently passed, we were able to quickly get a plan. Which you, I believe all that copy of. And then I highlighted here the location of the access of canopy, which was. Roughly forty-six by, uh, I think it's about twenty-two. It's actually got a couple of jobs in here. I have a little plan here. Plan and section that kind of shows me. A little bit more detail what it's going to involve. And where the columns are going to be located. There are some changes to this though. It's not going to have cross braces as shown here because we want it all open. Cross braces are kind of ugly and can be made so that we don't have those. Pass to the dudes out so you can all take a look at it. Something with a size. So. The canopy itself basically is going to go on top of. The four parking spaces that are located at the left front of Don's building. So if you would drive by and take a look at the. Front of the building. There's four parking stalls that are over to the left, which is sort of. Easy used for customer cars and occasionally a used car for sale. And then this is the area of, uh, in brown. The canopy basically covers those four spaces. There'll be two. What Don calls superchargers or quick chargers, which I see in your packets. I think we gave you copies of what those look like. You've seen those before. Uh, those will be located in there as well as two vacuums. To be used in conjunction with the car wash. And with the superchargers. The way I understand it. You know, in fifty or twenty minutes' time, certainly a half an hour. You can nearly charge a car, I think in a half hour, in fifteen or twenty minutes, you can get a darn good charge. While you might be there vacuuming your car after you went through the car wash. And that's kind of the plot behind it. So. There'd be two backs, two superchargers located. Under this canopy, well, solar on the roof. And, and I don't know if we talked about this before. But Don's building currently, the roof is covered with solar. He's, he's putting solar everywhere he can find and trying to essentially. And, and he's behind the meter, so it's powering his, his building. If there is excess. Which I'm guessing would be used in the vacuum hotel. They probably need to come for the power. But if there were excess, it would go back out to the grid and this would complement that. So. Uh, there is power there that's available to help. In terms of the superchargers, although they eat a lot of power. It's, it's a whole new service coming into the street just for those. Vacuums themselves, you would take advantage of some of the solar. Obviously, those don't use the kind of power that the superchargers use. But with the regulation that you put into effect. And the ability to vary the setbacks, which some of that was in your regulation before in terms of fueling stations and fueling islands. I think the last time. That I remember using it was, uh, the Noble gas station. That canopy is, is further forward than what would normally be allowed in the setback, but it falls under that. Fueling station, the gas station regulation, which would be forty-five feet. In your new regulation for the solar use. You've added another. Paragraph with some verbiage that says you're allowed to vary. The setback by up to fifty percent, I believe it says. So in this case, the front yard at thirty-five, pulling the charging stations. Fifty percent would put us at seventeen and a half. The least that we could have. By cutting the toner off here, we'd be getting to nineteen point five, so it's just under twenty feet. So with that majority vote, if so you. So choose. You could approve this at that location. When we look at the side yard. Side yard here is twenty, fifty percent variant, we'd be at ten, we're at ten point five to the corner there. So again, with the. The majority vote. Should you decide you would approve a setback, you know. Ten and a half to the end. There's really no change in purpose coverage in terms of the drainage here. This was essentially just covering. The existing parking area and paved area that's there. It's almost exactly the same size. I think when Norton had a memo on public demand. Religion was he didn't have. You know, to say about it. I know, uh. Ruth and I have talked about it two or three times since the application was submitted. Um, in terms of. Notification, signs are up. Obviously, it's a public hearing. Uh, notices were sent. I think those are all in the package. They were. Delivered to the town hall, so we didn't comply with any, as the notice said in the regulation. Uh, what we don't have is a detailed. Drawing of exactly what this canopy is going to look like yet. All we have is that. Very basic drawing. It shows you the sides, shows you the locations of the columns. As I said, the cross bracing will not be there. But that's, that's all the information that the structural designer had at this point, so they're still working on it. If you saw it, I suppose you could vote on this tonight, but I don't. Think it's a big issue if we want to wait a little bit to see what wants to come through, if we want to take a look at them. If you want to continue this, like, uh. If anybody has any questions or Donna will be able to add or to.
I'll just say that you would change, you want the visual, like the side brace, you don't want any side brace. And we want this all open.
And I, and I think that's important just for people using it, you know, like, I think they want to be open. They want to be visible. There's always concerns, especially I think in gas stations, you know, so the power washes about security. You know, they, they want to be lit, they want to be seen, they want people to know they're there and the cross bracing kind of blocks. That visibility a little bit. And this canopy is not that big. It could be built, it could be structured so that cross bracing. Isn't necessarily, we really don't want that. So.
Couple of questions, uh, of course, lights and lighting, hold on, is any work?
Yeah, there'll be lighting underneath the canopy itself, um, uh, as well as the vacuums themselves, that will align. The, the charging limits themselves are limited also. So we don't definitely need sufficient lighting for that. So Don, you're looking two vacuums, two charging stations?
Correct.
So if somebody's in there charging their car, basically it's going to make the vacuums inaccessible then? No? So the, the vacuums are going to be on either end of that and the charging stations are in the center. So you can still access. You can vacuum your car and charge or charge your car. Fast use in that, in that layout. No, just my concern was if you had two cars parked there doing charging, would the vacuum still be accessible? Yes.
And the sight line for the driveway is? Okay?
Yeah, the sight line for the driveway is fine. We're, we're almost twenty feet back on, from the property line. Probably another fifteen to eighteen feet to the actual edge of pavement. So we're back substantially. There, there's no issue with sight line at all.
So just. For the lighting and illumination. With the apartments there, the. It's not gonna like. I, I get a lot of, I hear a lot of complaints about the glow of green from Noble. Oh, you think it'll affect the apartments or?
I don't believe so. I mean.
I mean, yeah, I mean, just the angles.
You know, if we direct the lighting.
So yeah, I understand the canopy by design. What about? So, yeah, I understand the canopy by sign. What about the, the fixtures? You know, they, they have lights, you know, the vacuum cleaner and.
I got you, guys.
And the charging.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you can see vacuums at night, but they're not really.
I'm, I'm just more worried, you know, the apartment, you know, I mean, once people move into the lift, it never happens.
Yeah.
Would it be worth to throw some screening up right in that 10-foot area? There could be some, some shrubs right along the property.
Yeah, okay.
Plus, there's, there's an elevation.
There's a berm there. That's what I was trying to remember. The apartments have a berm. I think it runs all the way up to the drainage. I think it does, and almost wraps around, but honestly, I don't exactly remember it. I'll have to look at it again, but there is a berm there, and there is landscaping, and that was really meant, I think. Kind of to take on, which I'm, which I'm.
All I envision is, I, I think it's a great idea, but all I envision is like, you know, you, you, you see on TV or the movies where these people are in their apartments, and the neon sign is outside, you know, and certainly don't need a complaint from new residents, even though, you know, you're there before them, but it just.
No, I understand, yeah, I understand.
I'm sure it's not going to be bright and, you know.
No, and honestly, the pictures, pictures will probably be more towards the, past it, towards the front of the street, the street facing than in the rear.
Other questions from the commission?
You say vacuums on the outsides, UV in the insides, or that's somehow.
That's the best configuration that we could come up with, the storage lights and all the weapons.
Any idea what color? Color of the building?
Uh, the canopy itself.
Yeah, yeah.
Canopy itself, um.
Also, we're getting a copy of it.
It's not, it's not something done on the mix. I think I, I'm fine with something of a, like a green or, you know, this. The facade is not going to be very wide. Pillars are pulling more probably of a, of a more neutral color, you know, to, it's not going to be like big, flashy red, you know? That's not what I'm looking to do, you know, we're looking to be as aesthetic as we possibly can. Um, and I could, I could provide you with better information as well. You could, you know, put that in, I'm free to that, you know.
Are going to be added signage to identify that there's a EV charging station?
Jay and I had discussed this now. On the front of the building, there is a, a big sign that was there since I had talked about. Um, clearly, the canopy is now going to cause some kind of obstruction on that angle coming towards the shop. So if we could, probably smaller signage, um, the banner of the, you know, the facade was this wide, assuming, I mean, you know, the end, um, siding, maybe a sign there. Um, as far as the charge is concerned, that's going to go on in like a website that people will need to, I mean, advertising that would be something that's going to just come automatic. Anyone that has an electric car, they're going to be looking.
Look share.
As of right now, there's really no superchargers anywhere near us, so.
I would think, um, yeah. It is partially funded by the utility program. DOT might be amenable to, I'll say, the highway kind of sign at the, on the highway, saying EV charger at this exit, you know, the directional signs. And they might put one at your driveway, you know, because it's a state road and, yeah. Those are state and nationally approved signs for highways. Any other questions from the commission? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who's here in person who wants to speak to this application? Okay, identify yourself for the record, please.
Down Burnham 178, Stanic Road, East 13. I'm okay with this, this is good.
Okay, anybody else?
Can I go? Jason, 121 East Road, you know? No, uh, seriously, I think this is a really great proposal. To my knowledge, they're putting all electric vehicle charging stations in the town of East Windsor. It's accessible on Bull Route 5 and 140, right off the highway. I think the location makes a ton of sense. Um, and also, my, uh, my wife and I had dinner on Friday night at a burger place in South Windsor, in the, what I call the classic, please don't ever approve anything like that. Um, but, um, they had six or eight electric vehicle charging stations there, and they also had a burger joint, a Boston Market, and Olive Garden, and a whole strip of, of shopping malls. Given the proximity from Don's to Sophia's Plaza, that might actually add additional economic incentive. Um, so I, I think it's a good, a good project on a pass.
Yeah, and the coffee shop in, uh, Sophia's Plaza could benefit, too.
Charlie, or no, seven thirty, here. Would the charging stations in the vacuums be on 24/7 for cable to you?
Um, yes, that would be open.
Okay, so do you all think noise of the addition of the vacuums on the local residents to the apartments?
Um, well, obviously, the charging stations won't make any noise.
Right.
Um, I, I would say, you know, I can't honestly say that wouldn't happen, but, you know, the likelihood of people charging late at night are not charging the vacuum, or just, I don't know. You don't really see that too much in human car washes. Um, the, the units that are used are a lot more, are a lot less accessible, I should say, they're required in additional vacuum. What that actual reading is, I don't know, I have that information, but it is of value, I'm certain, I understand.
Well, the screen, the health, and what health, does that screening in the front, or all the noise?
Yeah, yeah, yes, absolutely, that would sound very.
Right. The Noble gas station, did they put them in yet? We have perked it, but I didn't know if they put them in.
I, I think it's actual, you know, I just want to be clear in post of that one of our meetings. And had, indicated this is the future, and was current, and you have all of them. So who knows, Don, I don't know if you've heard that speech or not, um, but I think it's.
It was solar canopies. Is there anybody online who would like to comment on this? Okay. Anybody else? Reset?
So.
Looking for a little extra time to tweak your elevation?
To see the final elevation of the canopy, we can provide that, so. And is the 25 adequate for most?
But what it looks like architecturally? And you also have the comment from Len Norton about adequate erosion and sediment controls during any excavation required for underground utilities. Okay, then a motion to continue this till our next meeting.
I'd like to make a motion, we consider, we continue application PZ 2022-2014 North Road, special use permit for site plan modification. The applicant's about, Don's Auto Care Center until our next meeting, which would be October 25.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favors?
Aye. Aye.
It's unanimous, Peg.
December 25. Thank you.
Thank you. We have nothing under old business, nothing under new business, nothing under um, other business, nothing under correspondence. For our business meeting, we are going to need to decide on officers for next year.
Are we usually doing it like in November?
No, the bylaws say we do it on the second meeting in October, so we can do it at the next meeting.
Agreed.
Okay. Nothing for executive session, so then a motion to adjourn would be in order. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Peg, that was made by Joe, seconded by Mike. No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, and we're adjourned.
Everybody have a good night.
Good night. Good night.
Yeah.